Okay, we'll get started, I'll call a meeting to order if you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the Town of Riverhead Planning Board Meeting. Today is Thursday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. First discussion item on the agenda today is for John J. Ratto for a two lot minus subdivision.
Good, how are you?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We just don't want to hit the really serious noise. Thank you, that's good. If you could, just your names for the record, please.
Sure.
Brian Weber from Weber Law Group, attorney.
Matthew Crane from Nelson and Poe, surveyor.
John J. Ratto.
John W. Ratto.
Okay, guys, thank you.
All right, John.
All right, so the planning department has received and reviewed a minor subdivision application to subdivide a four point seven one acre lot, two hundred and four nine hundred and sixty square feet into two lots, proposed lot one being two point three five acres and lot two being two point three six acres. With regards to secret, it is a type two action pursuant to town code and no environmental review is required. The subject parcel is four point seven one acres located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Sound Avenue and Forest Lane within the RB eighty zoning district, presently improved with a one story framed dwelling, garage, paved patio and paved driveway. The current parcel is also heavily wooded with oak trees and low ground shrubs with overhead high voltage lines towards the northern end of the parcel. No building was proposed at this time, however, any disturbance rated than one acre will require a SWIP on proposed lot two. With regards to conformity with zoning, within the RB eighty zoning, the minimum lot size within RB eighty zoning is eighty thousand square feet and both lots conform to that being well over the requirement. They have submitted a title report for the parcel, town attorney has recommended that they, in short, a minimum of a thousand dollars to the town and their attorney has re-submitted a revised title report and sent that to the town. The Riverhead Water District did have a number of comments that are addressed in the staff report. The proposed subdivision is to create a buildable lot within Riverhead Water District Extension number thirty five. There is a twelve inch main along the southern side of the parcel along Sound Avenue within Suffolk County Groundwater Management Zone Eight. It is noted on the yield map that is proposed that individual water service will need to be installed along Forest Hollow in the town right away to supply water to proposed lot two. An installation of the water service will be done by the Riverhead Water District at the expense of the applicant.
As far as laying the town road?
Yes. We are still awaiting comments from the Riverhead Highway Department and Suffolk County Planning Department. However, if they propose to install this within the town right away, the water service, they will need a permit from highway to open the road. Upon approval of the survey and subdivision, they will need approval from Suffolk County Department of Health and the yield map will need to be filed with Suffolk County Clerk and Suffolk County Real Property. And staff recommends that the planning board schedule a public hearing for February sixth to move the application forward.
What's the zone in there?
RB eighty.
All right, I mean, this kind of seems straightforward. You're gonna build a house there, I guess? Is that the plan?
Yeah.
So, what the plan is, if I may, so I'm gonna call John John and JJ, because he goes by Jay, he goes by John. It's to build a house for John. You know, the gentlemen own the property, they really did some wonderful renovations to the house that's there, that's what it looked like, I have some other pictures.
They live in there?
That's what it looks like now. No, they built it, they have a rental permit from the town, it's being rented out, all done with, the renovations are done with permits, really well done. And the purpose is to subdivide and build a house for John. They're local, they have a Riverhead based business, J. Ratto Landscaping in Calverton. And again, as Mr. Fluck said, there's no, we don't need any variances.
Forest Road is a private road or is it a town road?
It's a town road. These homes, are they houses or what?
Yep.
Oh, that's.
Oh, they're homes.
They're homes.
Single family.
Right, okay. But none of them front, obviously sound, they all front forest?
Yes.
Yes.
So how would they serve with public water?
That's what I was trying to figure out, there's gotta be a water man down that road.
We think that there's individual service drops, we're trying to confirm with Riverhead Water.
So you think they're all out here?
Yeah, we, there's a meter pit over here, which we think is serving dwelling over here. Their suggestion is to have a service drop rather than, we, misidentifying as proposed main, but you know, a service line going down and then into the property. We're presuming the other houses are served with that, that's, but we'll verify that.
Okay. You picked up that house that was existing there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. As I drive by there all the time.
That's what it looks like now, I put the picture.
I know, I know what it looks like.
Yeah.
I see it all the time.
Sure. And that's what it did look like. That's how it looks now on the interior. Really well done. Town overall is very happy with that. Any questions from the board?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, again, straightforward, public hearing next, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Who's gonna attend a public hearing? You'll be here or?
Yeah, we'll all be here.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great day.
Of the robot.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Can't bench that hell with this as well, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay, item two on the agenda is Riverhead Retail Partners Area Real Estate, Riverhead.
Good. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, happy to help. I found, I'm not going back, I just wanted to share it with you, say, thought about you guys, a seven eleven newly built, standalone, south side of Sunrise Highway by one eleven, in ice slip, and it doesn't have the logo.
I have no idea.
Take a look.
Go down twenty-four. What's that look like, Eddie?
Sorry? Yeah, most recent.
So I just wanted to go over a few things about the aesthetics of the building. We had conditionally approved elevations in the past that showed antique brick, antique red brick and a cultured stone in parchment stripe. And conditions of the resolution were that it had to be all natural materials, it couldn't be veneers. So, I got back this new elevation, which I provided to everybody. Instead of the culture, it's not in, you know, jump in if I'm wrong, they're proposing this antique ivory brick for the stripe A. And they provided the antique red for you to look at. Sorry.
Break the nails.
Which should be contextual with the other buildings.
And then a culled concrete masonry unit, impartsment is proposed with like the foundation area. So, so I just wanted to check with the board because one of the conditions of the resolution was that the board wanted to review the materials and the colors. As far as the dumpster enclosure, it's going to be CMU concrete masonry unit, I didn't get a sample, but I'm told it's going to match the antique red.
We'll probably end up doing the brick around the unit, so it'll really look, it'll be brick for all intents and purposes.
Also, as far as there was a condition in the resolution about screening any HVAC or refrigerator compressor units. And the plan does now show that there'll be two HVAC units on the roof. And I, I did question it because I wasn't sure how much would be visible and I did get this sectional plan.
Yeah, I have enough to run out to everybody.
So.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
I was a little bit confused about this one because when you look at the building elevation, the tower is to the right, which would be the west side. And when you look at the section, the tower is to the left, which would be to the east side. Also, when you look at the top section, the rooftop unit is shown in the foreground and the parapet wall is shown beyond it.
It's just a section view, you're looking through it, yeah, so the view is from the rear to the front.
Well, this is the one, this is the one with the windows, though.
Yeah, but that's just for reference, yeah.
Look through.
Yeah, you're looking through the building, you know, there is a.
Looking through the building.
It says entry doors beyond, so you're looking.
It's almost like you're looking, I think.
I mean, there's a rooftop plan too that'll provide a little more.
On that side.
It's, it's, it's very confusing, that's all I have to say. But in any event, it looks like the rooftop, I don't, I didn't have a scale and the plan is not full size, so I can't tell you how far above the parapet the rooftop units will project.
Yeah, it's a matter of inches, it's less than a foot. What we've done also is we've pitched the roof toward the front of the building because our drainage is gonna be out front anyway, so we are bringing them down, the parapet's fairly significant in height and on that one exhibit, it does rough in, you can see. So from, one of them's obviously gonna be behind the tower, the other's gonna be on the east side. But again, it's on the lowest portion of the roof, I, I think you're gonna struggle to see it from the street.
So.
I think that deflected ten inches, ten and a half inches.
Yeah.
So, you know, ten and a half inches.
Yeah, from the ground here.
These samples look good, too?
Yeah.
Okay, so, since the board is okay with everything, I will, before I go on, if you have these elevations and you don't want to keep them, I would appreciate getting them back.
So there's nothing else for us to do with it, right?
Um, well, I haven't, I haven't looked at, that's the wellness center. I haven't looked at the full site plan as of yet, but I did want them to get on the agenda just to make sure the materials were okay. Next meeting would be the potential resolution.
Approval, February sixth?
Right.
I guess you're skipping a week?
Well, it's next Thursday, next month.
I was like, what do you know, it was gonna be the thirtieth and then I saw it was this.
First and third Thursday of the month.
Oh, okay.
At that meeting we'll discuss the color of the hands of the block.
I don't know about it.
Yeah, I can only get to it.
Thank you again.
It looks very nice, though.
Thank you again for your indulgence.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay, item three on the agenda, Wellness Center and Medical Building Office.
Hello.
You can open yours, Karen.
Yeah. So this is the, an administrative amended site plan. We've spoken about this project before, it's for the addition of a exterior staircase, they removed the interior staircase, added an exterior staircase. It was also to do some minor changes to the parking area, slight change to the entrance location, provide more landscaping in the transitional yard to the residential uses. They are going to require point one oh of a TDR for this, they used TDRs previously. I did go out to the site before I wrote this up, I hadn't been out there. And I did notice PVC fencing had been put up along the border with the residential use, which is great. However, they weren't showing existing black chain link fencing for Riverhead Commons and there's no fence, there was no fencing along the county of Suffolk Parkland. So, one of the conditions of this resolution is that they add a six foot black chain link fence on here to, to make the fencing contiguous. Also that they changed the fence detail for the PVC fencing to match what's there. They didn't update the side yard, the total side yard setback, so that's a condition. There was a detail of the parking that didn't have a ten foot wide stall, although everywhere else it's, it'd be seen that it's ten foot wide, so they're gonna correct that. One thing I did want to check with the board, because I was not involved in the previous approval, was that it did show a future cross access to the south to the car dealership in line with their traffic aisle. However, the resolution that approved the original site plan didn't have any condition about doing a future cross access agreement. So, I added in here that they should show this cross access.
They had already agreed to it, right?
Mr. Meta can talk about that, I, all I know is that the plan that was approved showed it and I think it was an oversight that.
Right.
It didn't include the condition about doing the agreement.
No big deal.
Was that your understanding?
Yeah.
What I need to do, whatever I have to correct, I will correct.
Um.
Just filing what paper work with the county, right?
No, it's, it's an agreement, you would work with the, the town attorney's office and they would give you some boilerplate, you would have to file it.
It's not a big deal.
Okay, I'm fine.
Then there were some areas that are depicted as wooded when they're not actually wooded, when you go out there, so there's about twenty trees on the property kind of scattered about, so I had indicated that they should show the locations and the caliber. Again, some updating of numbers of plantings and then they had changed one of the plantings out for some reason and it's on the do not sell list, so I indicated some other alternatives. Also, I did put in a condition that the second floor shall only be used for office, not medical office. And the only reason I put that in there is that there are some offices that look like they could be used for exam rooms, so I wanted to make sure it was clear that.
There is not lumbering, nothing there.
It's supposed to be a medical billing office, so that's a general office. Also, that the second floor plan would be revised to remove the laundry room because why do you need a laundry room for a medical building office? And I did check with Suffolk County Department of Health, I spoke to one of their engineers and they did say they need a final approval of updated plans showing the staircase. Okay, so, that's pretty much, also that there are some water district fees that are outstanding that need to be paid. It was on the last page of the resolution.
I'll let you print out the piece.
Okay, I don't know, when I wrote it up, they said they hadn't received them, so just make sure that gets done, you'll need that to get a CO. Also, you'll need a satisfactory binder inspection from engineering because you failed that one and a final inspection from the planning department before you get a CO. So that's pretty much it.
Okay.
That's a most.
Is that all in the resolution?
What's that?
Is that all in the resolution?
That's all in the resolution.
And that's fine, right? Everything's good, okay.
You're welcome, just follow up with me and we'll get everything done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can leave?
Yeah, sure, do whatever you want.
They'll, they'll do the resolution, promote on the resolution later.
Unlock the gates.
Yep.
Okay, next item is Merritt Creek Townhouses.
Hi, how are you?
All right, Karen, good, which is the fronts?
All right. So we had had a discussion about the kind of abbreviated comments we received from the ARB on the project and we got the more lengthy memo dated January sixth. So, basically, the way, well, it's about buildings A and B, which front Main Street. So it looks like they are concerned about having a front, front door on, or a front ambiance on Main Street. I'm really not gonna get too much into the interior floor plan, which they had recommended be flipped, I, I don't know if that's really. Yes. However, they did bring up that the architect has tried to dress up the rear, what they call the rear street facade by adding a continuous porch with columns. So that's what I highlighted here on the bottom of the page. They said, you know, they're concerned about things like barbecues and things being on the main street. The plans do not show any street facing elements such as decorative fencing, walkways or plantings to enhance the appearance. Last time we met, we did discuss that the site plan doesn't actually show fencing and walkways, but this picture on the front shows fencing and walkways leading to each front door. So, based on the comments so far, I think that's something the ARB would want.
I've been thinking a lot about this and I, I just got this today because I couldn't open it. Mr. Sokolowski said that he doesn't want to see barbecues, bicycles and all that, and that makes sense, but those are all things that people want to use.
Right.
So how about a berm between the sidewalk and the building, so a berm with plantings would hide grills and people would still be able to use that area and have a little bit of privacy. A berm with plantings or a fence on top, people driving by wouldn't see barbecues and bicycles, but people lived there would still be able to use that little area, that might.
Yeah, that was my only comment as well, you know, I, I thought that was on their part, I thought that was a good comment. People tend to put things up there and it just, it makes it look, you know, just makes it look bad.
I agree with that.
And it's such a pretty, it's such a, it should be a nice, it'll be a nice looking place, so you can cover it up to the degree.
The memo also indicates that they thought the, the fact that the window above didn't align with the door below was problematic. The door does not align with any of the second floor facade windows, which creates an unbalanced look. In addition, the continuous front porch with the overhang and projecting gables, which is, appears to also be what they're calling a colonnade, at the entrances is preferred. And we would expect this welcoming element to remain all along the east Main Street, south facing facade. So as far as the facade goes, it looks like their only major issue was the fact that the doors don't align with the upper story window. And then that, you know, they're indicating the front should face Main Street. So I don't know, I leave it up to the board to.
I, the window thing doesn't bother me that much.
Is there a reason it was designed that way?
We wanted to have the front of the building facing the parking lot, so that generally they all do, they're all, all of them face the parking.
The windows, the windows, but they're aligned, they're just.
Yeah, he's talking about.
The windows.
Although on Main Street, on Main Street, that the window is not over the door.
Well, I think he was, what he's trying to do is come up with some kind of balance on each one of these, have doghouse.
On the second floor.
Right.
That's not a real big improvement. What do you think about coming up with the berm?
I like the berm idea, but I think that the berm, we may not have enough room to do a berm, I was thinking more like a fence. And I know we could put a really nice looking fence in there.
How many feet, do we have a copy of the site plan here?
Yeah.
See how many feet we have, because you don't need a high berm, a low berm with plantings creates.
So that, that'll help, that'll come up as well.
And it'll give the people more privacy.
I mean, it looks like it, it.
Would have enough?
Let's see what the front, where is it? Twenty eight point four two feet from the front of the property to the building. So, that's not a lot, but.
Well, we're gonna lose probably eight feet just on the berm, you know.
Right, but the whole, the whole intent of it is, is that we don't want people using this as a backyard, as a typical backyard along Main Street, because it's inconsistent with the rest of the properties.
Hey, also, what my concern was, people.
You put up a nice fence, you're definitely gonna have a barbecue out front. Because they'll think they're shielded.
Well, is, is that bad?
To have a barbecue in, in the front of Main Street and, and loan furniture?
If it's behind a berm and, and a fence, it's gonna be private, I would eliminate the individual sidewalks to each unit, just make it a common.
I agree with that, I, I don't want to make it too welcoming for people coming off the street.
Right, I can see people, yeah, exactly.
Right, like, say, you know, we're gonna have people parking out front and having parties over the fence.
Right now, I mean, on the site plan, they're just showing a sidewalk leading from the public sidewalk to the, to the parking area side of the building. There's really no pedestrian access to the front doors as shown. There's really no pedestrian access to the front doors as shown unless they do these, um, separate walkways.
Yeah, those.
Right.
So that's going to be like you said, people walking, they're just going to. Under Main, Main Street. Main Street, so I don't want to see a berm. I I I think it's a good idea because it's going to hide the things that people use, like grills and bicycles and.
What do you think they have, um, right across the street there by, uh, eight twenty one? Is there a fence along those?
That's a fence, you know, it's a six foot fence.
I'm afraid.
My thinking is if you had a high fence like that, you still would see these roofs up here and that would still give you the impression that it is, you know, like the rest of the riverhead.
Front, yeah. Well, I I, to me, I think the applicant should come up on the way to screen the front, give people the privacy. Will give us an attractive project.
I agree with that.
So some sort of, um, opaque, decorative fence.
I'd like to, I'd like to buy my ear as well.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be an eight foot par, you know, maybe two, three feet.
Okay.
Plantings.
Plantings and fencing, you know, it's up to you to come up with ideas.
No, I I I love what you're saying. I can do that. And I would love to do that.
So some sort of low berm.
Yep.
Um, fencing.
Privacy fencing and and plantings.
And maybe just one walkway instead of all of those, you said?
Right, so they they would show, show a walkway connection here so people can.
Gotcha.
So people can get to their doorway.
Good, okay.
The interior will still remain the same as the original plan.
Yes.
I could switch it around like. I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very, very, thank you.
All right.
Okay, item five on the agenda, seven eleven convenience store expansion seventeen thirty three Old Country Road.
Hello, gentlemen.
How are you?
How we doing, guys?
Good, how are you?
We're on the better, the label.
If you could just state your names for the record.
Sean Walter, uh, represent the applicant as town attorney.
Dave Bitner, representing High Point Engineering, the engineering director.
All right, so the planning department has received and reviewed a site plan application proposing to construct a nine hundred and eighty five square foot addition to an existing sixteen hundred and eighty two square foot masonry building presently occupied by a seven eleven convenience store with an accessory shell fueling station. Site plan also proposes landscaping, lighting, and drainage improvements. Proposed action is a type two action pursuant to SECRE as it involves construction or expansion of a primary or accessory non-residential structure with less than four thousand square feet of gross floor area. Project site is a zero point six nine acre parcel located on the south side of Old Country Road, located within the Business Center zoning use district. Uh, as I stated, it's presently approved with a sixteen hundred and eighty two square foot, one story masonry building, fueling canopy with four fuel pumps, a total of eight fueling stations, and related site improvements. Parcel shares its eastern property boundary with Maximum Motorsports and shares its western and southern property boundaries with the Sabre Shopping Center, which contains Buffalo Wild Wings, Dick's Sporting Goods, Five Below, and other assorted uses. The site does, is served by a pedestrian cross access with the Sabre parking lot, which is located near the southwest corner of the subject parcel and connects to the Sabre parking lot in the vicinity of the Vitamin World Building. Uh, the proposed nine hundred and eighty five square foot expansion would be used to expand the current retail offerings within the seven eleven. Um, the floor plans do indicate expanded beverage counters, a coffee island, novelty cases, as well as office space and an additional restroom. The proposed addition would be constructed on the southeastern facade of the existing building and would maintain a six point eight foot setback from the rear property line. The location of the proposed construction is within a required twenty five foot rear yard setback and as such will require relief from the Riverhead Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, the site plan calls for a saw cutting of a majority of the parking lot for the purposes of installing onsite drainage. Uh, one thing the applicant must clarify is that if the business is to remain in operation during the proposed construction, the safe day of the operation of the site must be maintained. And if the store is to remain open, the applicant should provide a work plan which will allow for safe vehicular and pedestrian access. Site plan proposes to remove much of the existing landscaping beds along Old Country Road, as seen on page three of my staff report, with the exception of the existing trees identified in figure three. Uh, site plan proposes to revegetate these areas with a number of different types of landscaping, as I've detailed on page four. Um, the site plan does include a note that the contractor shall provide an irrigation system for all landscaped beds, um, although there are no details as to the proposed system of irrigation. Uh, one recommendation from staff would be any irrigation system should be required to include smart irrigation controls in order to help control water usage onsite. During a site visit, uh, I noted that the existing pole mounted lighting fixtures, which are shown on page four, um, they appear to be L E D light fixtures. However, they are angled up at sort of a forty five degree angle. The application does propose that these fixtures will remain. They just need to be identified with the color temperature and if they are to remain, uh, the property owner must correct the angle of the mounting so that they are dark sky compliant. Color temperatures for all existing proposed lighting fixtures must be included on the revised plans and must not exceed three thousand degree Kelvin. Um, in reviewing the prior histories and prior approvals on the subject property, this subject parcel did undergo a site plan review by the Riverhead Planning Board in two thousand nine to convert an existing mini mart into the seven eleven and do a re- related site work. Per Planning Board Resolution number eighteen dated February nineteenth, two thousand nine, a future cross access agreement to the satisfaction of council to the planning board was to be filed with the county clerk. Um, and it was supposed to establish future cross access points with the eastern and western parcels. Based on the current configuration of the surrounding areas, the site currently shares its western boundary. You've got the Vitamin World right there and you've got related parking for the Sabre site. And there is a number of parking stalls on the eastern property boundary, both on the seven eleven site, as well as on the western side of the Maximum Motorsports. Um, so I don't know how the board feels, but it doesn't really seem appropriate to establish these cross accesses at this point.
We've walked the site numerous times and it would be almost impossible to marry up our park, our easement areas or our site plan with the site plans for the two adjoining parcels at this point.
What about to the south?
Uh, the south, they do have a pedestrian cross access and, uh, there is, the only location that it would even seem feasible, but it would require what I consider would be a lot of work. Kind of in in this vicinity, they have the existing vent, uh, I guess the vent stacks from the fuel tanks. That would really be the only feasible location which would require relocation of these vents. Uh, I I don't know if the plan.
Getting involved with pulling fuel tanks. There is, where's the, no, the vitamin shop's not depicted on here. There is.
Should be, it's in the. Yeah, there is, there is a, there is a concrete walkway.
Right, that goes into.
Which serves as pedestrian access.
So, I mean, it goes into a parking lot, but they've got the concrete walkway in here. That's not interfering with anything but the one parking stall.
How many parking stalls are there altogether?
Nineteen.
Yes, nineteen.
All right, so it's not feasible?
No.
How many do we need?
Nine.
I mean, if this was an issue, we could pull out that parking stall and continue a pedestrian to the crosshatched area. But I don't know that it makes any difference because I doubt, I've been frequenting, I'm the shopping center for a while now and, uh, he has cheap gas. There's never anybody parked here. There's no reason to have anybody parked there.
Yeah, there, I don't see anybody really.
Yeah, I I've visited the site many times and the parking is, I've never seen even half full.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Most of the time I park in the shopping center, you know, to do, you know, like when it dicks and then if I want something at seven eleven, I just walk across.
Oh, you're blocking here, using that walk?
Yeah.
But I mean, if that's a, something you'd like us to do, David, that's likely.
Yeah, I mean, or we can just propose an area where if the future development on both lots again occurs, we can agree to say this is where we'll establish it. If that's acceptable too.
No, I'm not even saying that. I'm just saying that we would, if you eliminated that, of course, I don't think any, I don't think there's ever going to be vehicular traffic going through, but it's pedestrian traffic. Because it benefits our client. So if if we eliminated that stall and just put.
We're actually providing striping from the walk already.
Oh, okay. All right, so then we're doing it. Sorry, we're just looking at the.
Yeah, you get the survey.
See, plans help.
What we're doing with the fencing, says existing fences are a mess.
I can have our guy fix it. It's not on our property.
Oh, it's not?
I don't think it's our, and what's not our fence.
No, it's our fence, yeah. If you look in the corner.
I can ask Michael.
Yeah, that's the fence.
I I can see if Michael can send somebody out there to fix it then.
It's kind of a mess.
But I, I'm assuming that fencing was put up as part of the Sabre.
Probably.
Didn't last very long.
No, I'll I'll ask him to see, I mean, I'm not going to have it, I can't have him replace it, but I can ask him if he can bang it back up. And I, I mean, you'd have to really send somebody out to Sabre.
Sabre was a hassle.
Um, the site plan does propose a dumpster enclosure to the south of the building, which will be screened by a six foot high vinyl coated chain link fence with privacy slats. Um, the plan should just be revised to include the color of the proposed vinyl coating and the proposed vinyl privacy slats. Does the board have any preference slats?
Stay in the same location, though, right?
Uh, no, so the expansion of the building, the dumpsters are currently located behind the site in the southeast corner of the building. The site plan would establish the dumpster enclosure to the, I guess, to the southwest of the building right up here. So, does the board have any preference in terms of dumpster enclosure color?
Can we get there? Still have access?
Yeah.
Black chain link, I guess.
Black vinyl chain link, black privacy slats.
I mean, the existing building's white, so I don't know.
White dumpster corals don't look for long.
Okay, just.
But you guys have another color, that's fine. I don't think white, white is the best choice.
Um, we did receive some comments from the town engineer regarding the concrete and asphalt paving detail. Um, that will need to be revised to comply with the town code. And he commented on the lighting fixtures. The application did not require referral to the Suffolk County Planning Commission as it was a minor addition, less than a thousand square feet with no change to use or occupancy. Um, and we did receive comments from the Suffolk County Department of Public Works. A permit will be required with any, for any improvements within the road right of way. Um, we need to send them a section two thirty nine F, which is a notice of work commencement. The plan, they did say that the plan needs to be revised to show two new A D A compliant concrete aprons along the Old Country Road frontage. Well, that'll need to be revised. Um, and they will require an impact fee.
Yep.
Um, I did note on the plans, on the site plan on the survey, there is a taking line, which is approximately from old, the property line, appro- approximately seventeen feet of the front of the property. It looks as if, as though this is for a future possible reconstruction of Old Country Road. Um, a- at this point, I don't think that's a significant issue. If at some point down the road, the county ever improves the road right of way, um, I kind of just did a rough sketch. I mean, it may require the elimination of three, maybe four parking stalls, but being that they're already well overparked, I don't see that being a significant issue.
Does the, does that plan bring the entire site into compliance as far as dark skies?
Uh, well, that's, they would, they do need to just clarify, um, as I said, some of the pole mounted fixtures are sort of angled up. Um, that will need to be, you know, when we grant them approvals, we can.
That's the granddaddy of dark skies, just so you know, in town hall. Did you know that? First day I walked in town hall, it's like, I get this new legislation. Nobody's got it. I want you to draft dark skies legislation. I could be better. And that's good.
We will, we will ensure the, uh, they are proposing gooseneck lighting fixtures on the front of the building. They are dark sky compliant. And as I stated, the pole mounted fixtures can just be angled down and they would be dark sky compliant once that's brought into, uh, compliance. Uh, it will require approvals from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services for the construction, the increase in design flow. Um, now, being that this application falls under the administrative site plan review, um, it is within the planning board's discretion if they would like to hold a public hearing on this application or not. Being that it's a, a minor addition to the building, it doesn't significantly change the use and they will require a variance. So they will need to post and publish that and have a public hearing. Um, does the board want to have a public hearing on this matter?
I'm going to back you up, okay?
Okay, absolutely.
So the, um, waste water management, you're adding a bathroom, right? You didn't say we're adding a bathroom.
There are two bathrooms in there now, right?
There is a bathroom being.
And you're not connected to the sewer?
We are connected.
Oh, it is, okay, okay.
They are, yeah, yeah, yes. Are they keep both bathrooms?
But this is an expansion, you have to get back to help. Um, so the new layout is.
They were getting rid of one of the outside bathrooms, but I.
Actually, yeah, they got rid of all the outside bathrooms and they just relocated the bathroom to the rear.
So there's no bathroom. This, so it's going from two to one?
There's one new. Right.
Right, okay. That's what, I I just remember seeing this, the outdoor storage, or this storage in the.
Mm-hmm.
And we're in the process of preparing, well, they're in the process of preparing the application to the county.
Yes.
And we will try to get on the Z B A as soon as we can. We got the denial letter. What we did, what they did is they kept the setback, uh, the same degree of nonconformance throughout the entire, uh, rear of the building.
Looks good. So if it's going through the zoning, I I don't administratively, I don't think we need to do a public hearing. Would it?
I don't think so.
It's not residential impact, so.
All right, so what? I would ask that the applicant, uh, maintains the landscaping because it leaves a little bit desired right now. I I get it, he has cheap gas prices and that's great, but there's not a lot of landscaping. Hopefully you can, uh, kind of maintain it a little bit.
Like your pictures.
That's what we want it to look like.
That's right.
You're a water guy. Why would you want it to look like that? That uses a lot of water.
That is not a landscaping, about a cup of water would.
Spins the meter.
Oversaturate.
That is true. It always marvels when you water them in the, in the rain. I thought that was a great idea because we're making money at low, you know, low times. All right, so we're not, we don't have to do a public hearing where they go to the Z B A and then come back.
Yeah, well, once you get, once you get the variance, you know, we'll prepare a resolution, capture some of the things the board said and a public hearing from us.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay, guys, have a great day.
Happy to.
Okay, item six, Villas at Ronoke.
The empty town.
Yes.
How you doing?
Hi, guys.
How are you?
How are you?
All right.
Good morning, buddy.
How was your vacation?
Uh, not too great. It's kind of a vacation I want.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was a vacation.
It's a medical vacation.
Oh, no, sorry.
All right, so we're here in furtherance of the Villas at Ronoke major subdivision application, which has been submitted. Uh, the applicant has submitted a revised sketch plan. Um, this sketch plan does show the thirteen lots, which were the as of right of six lots, plus the seven transfer of development rights, which got them to thirteen. A fourteenth lot was added to comply with the requirements of the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. Um, at the request of the planning board, the applicant has revised it. Previous iterations of the plan had showed each individual parcel encumbered with an open space easement. This plan now shows the open space area as its own separate lot. That open space area is shown to be three point four zero seven acres, uh, which complies with the cluster requirements of the town code. The way we interpreted the code is clustering is required in the R A eighty zoning district. Code states that a minimum of fifty percent of the land must be clustered and preserved. Taking the calculation that about six point six acres of land are located in the R A eighty zoning district, they applied that fifty percent and clustered it throughout the parcel. So it does seem to meet the intent of the clustering requirements. Just some staff recommendations. Uh, as I said, they have addressed the clustering. The plans does, the plans do show a thirty two thousand three hundred and twenty five square foot drainage and recharge area. The only things that we're looking at, the approval resolution must clarify the as of right development potential, the T D R potential, and the requirements of Long Island Workforce Housing Act, which I have written up in the resolution. Counsel of the Planning Board has reviewed that and he was satisfied with the wording of it. As the subdivision process moves along, uh, staff recommends that a homeowners association be established and would be responsible for maintaining the open space areas. And would further recommend that a minimum five foot high vinyl chain link coated fence with no gates or breaks be erected along that property line border in order to prevent additional clearing or other types of utilization of that open space. or other types of utilization of that open space.
I think that captures everything from the last meeting, right?
That gets the whole thing.
No issues with it?
None that you all can mention, man.
So now, wow.
Now, they can go ahead.
To accounting.
They want to do it onsite.
Okay.
Awesome, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright.
Thanks, Shabby.
Okay, no public hearings this afternoon. Any public comment on resolutions? Any public comment on resolutions?
Well, I move resolution number three, Central Square at Wading River. Resolution approving a preliminary site plan, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to approve resolution three, Central Square at Wading River, for a preliminary site plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved.
I'll move resolution four for the Wellness Center and Medical Office Building to approve the amended site plan, so moved.
Second motion?
The motion made in second to approve resolution four for the Wellness Center and Medical Office Building, administrative approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll move resolution number five, authorize a plan we want to publish a public hearing for the minor subdivision of John Rattle.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve resolution five for a public hearing for John Rattle subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll move resolution number six for John Kajowski and Sons Minor Subdivision, granting approval for a two-lot minor subdivision application, subdivided an existing one hundred and twenty acre farm parcel and create two individual lots.
Second a motion.
Motion made in second to approve resolution six for John P. Kajowski and Sons Minor Subdivision, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Number seven.
Take Osborne, Eddie. Just discussion before we do it, this is four oh six Osborne. I want to compliment the planning staff and the work of the applicant and the board to make this better. Can't say that I'm in love with it, but it's a heck of a lot better than what it was, so all involved, including the applicant, thank you. That said, I'll move resolution number seven, which is four oh six Osborne Avenue.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve resolution seven for four oh six Osborne Avenue, final site plan approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed. I've been opposed to it throughout because of the size of the small apartments, I continue that.
Okay, so the resolution is approved with a vote of four to one, with no from member Bear. Number eight?
I'll move resolution eight, Tara Development, to classify a two-lot minor subdivision as an unlisted action pursuant to SECRE, so moved.
Second a motion.
Motion made in second to approve resolution eight for Tara Development for a SECRE lead agency, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved.
I'll move resolution number nine, approving fourteen-lot sketch plan for major subdivision of the Villas at Roanoke.
Second a motion.
Motion made in second to approve resolution nine, Villas at Roanoke sketch plan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is approved. Any public comment on any matter in front of the planning board? Any public comment?
Make a motion to move the minutes of the December nineteenth meeting, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes of December nineteenth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll move the minutes to January second, twenty twenty.
Second a motion.
Okay, motion made in second to approve the minutes of January second, twenty twenty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. We are going to be going into executive session, but two things before we do, just Jefferson, is Jefferson here? Yes, please.
Yeah, Chairman, I want to bring up something.
Do you want to run a planning event?
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be the next time?
They're holding, yeah, I was instructed.
While we're waiting, we did receive some correspondence today, and I'll ask Carissa to read it into the record.
Dear Chairman Carey, I was hoping to attend today's meeting and respond to the Planning Board twelve nineteen nineteen public record comments and questions raised about my knowledge and involvement with the NextTerra application and its omission from the S-Power supplemental EIS. Unfortunately, I have the flu and am responding remotely. NextTerra filed in September two thousand eighteen, but the plan is deemed to incomplete, hence all reviews ceased. I left the town October fifth, two thousand eighteen. I did not review the NextTerra application as an employee. I understood it was withdrawn. I was not aware of any resubmission, which I have learned was in December two thousand eighteen, January two thousand nineteen. I was retained for the Planning Board S-Power SEIS in mid-January two thousand nineteen. No one advised me NextTerra was active. As in standard practice, I submitted a draft SEIS to the Planning Department on February twentieth, two thousand nineteen, via email at one forty PM. I received back no comments from planning regarding the NextTerra project for its inclusion in the SEIS, and thus the SEIS document was finalized and dated March first, two thousand nineteen. The Planning Department's staff report, as referenced in the NextTerra special permit application, is dated April two thousand nineteen, one month after my SEIS assignment was completed. I had no prior meetings with NextTerra representatives or knowledge that NextTerra was an active project, and had I known, I would have included it in the S-Power cumulative impact assessment conducted after, conducted under the S-Power SEIS. In addition, I have no conflict of interests and would appreciate those who suggested I may explain the details of their concerns. I look forward to working with the board and the Planning Department to further clarify any questions you may have. I ask you read and accept these statements into the public record. Thank you, Jeffrey Seaman.
Okay, thank you. Jefferson, I just wanted to ask for an update on the environmental justice for S-Power?
Yep, we're trying to find out the specific block groups, and we're gonna prepare some just more detailed information that I gave to you at the work session last time, and then you, the planning board, have to tell me if you believe that there's any impact on the minorities or the lower-income people. Just to give you an example, though, there's just an article that came out through APA, there's a city, and I forget which one it was, that they have severe health issues in this lower-income area, and as a result of the city planning this industrial park right next to it, so all the fumes are going into this lower-income area. That's an environmental justice area, they're being adversely impacted by the fumes coming off of this. And just giving you that as a worst-case example. You're asked for your opinion, is this solar farm going to have any significant potential environmental impacts against these targeted minority groups or lower-income populations? We staff cannot identify any, but if you have any, by all means, share them with me, and I'll put in a letter for Stan, signature, and send it back to the state.
Is there a time, sorry?
February third.
I was gonna say, it'd be nice if you could post a public hearing, and anybody had any issues, but I don't think we have time.
So we did, we did bring some, some items out at the last meeting, so I'll put some things into writing to you, and if anyone else has it, please email Jefferson, okay?
Yep.
And then we'll see a draft before anything goes out.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Ed, you had something else?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it would be wise for the ARB and the Planning Board to have a joint meeting and see if we can get more on the same page as far as our potential areas. I don't know, it just seems like lately, you know, their opinion or opinion is not right or wrong, it's different. I'm just wondering if, you know, I just want to see if we can elevate the appearances of the projects that are coming, and if we could work together with the ARB, or if you want to just keep going like going, that's fine, too.
Well, I mean, we can invite him to one of our work sessions. There was some communication we had, I don't know if you shared that with the rest of the board, that response we had for-
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did not.
Okay.
Yep.
Maybe forward that to everyone.
Yep.
And we'll invite him to one of our future work sessions.
Yeah, I mean, because like I read the chairman's, ARB chairman's letter, and I picked up some things.
Just to give you an example, I did, I want to share this with you, I did attend their, not their last meeting, the meeting before last, to talk about the 7-11 because there were some feelings hurt, and I explained to them is that they're advisory, and they get that, but they live in, it's a vacuum, they get to, the easy part of it, just looking at one thing, the architecture and maybe a little bit of the site layout. You, as the planning board, have to look everything soup to nuts. DOT comments, DEC comments, staff comments, compliance with the code, you have to look, comments from all the other departments, you have to bring all that information together.
We had many on that project.
Yeah, and you have to just, you know, disseminate all that information and come up with what you think is the best, and it's not going to be the best of one world because it's going to affect DOT in terms of its access. If you push the building over here, it's going to affect DEC and its comments and its charter and its goals. So I think they get that, but they still feel like, you know, they're very passionate about what they do, and I think having the meeting, I think would go a long way, so there's a sharing of information.
Well, no one's trying to hurt anybody's feelings, we're trying to make the projects better.
No, they do a great job, we, you know, we appreciate their input, so let's extend an invite to them to come to one of our work sessions.
I'll give you just one other example, there was a sign application, it complied with the code, but they didn't like it, and they wanted to deny it. It wasn't coming upon me as the chief person for the Building Department to say yea or nay to the building permit. There's nothing in the code I could say nay to it, but I totally respected ARB, I didn't want to create any friction, so I said, let's hold off on issuing the building permit, let me go talk to the applicant, and I did, and then I met with the ARB, and we came up with some mutually acceptable compromise. The first input I got from the ARB is, oh, once again, we're being ignored, and like, well, if I ignored you, I would have just authorized the issuance of the permit. The fact that I took time to meet with the applicant individually and to you, with you, ARB, means that I'm listening to what you have to say, and I'm trying to find some mutually agreeable solution.
They don't know how to spell compromise.
Right, and that's what we end up doing. So, we are listening to what they say.
We'll invite him to one of our meetings.
We'll do it.
Alright, thank you. Okay, at this time, the board will go into executive session, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation by Ed Partridge and Calwatin Tree Farm.
Make a motion that we go into, close the regular session and move into executive session.
So moved. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.